It's at six o'clock, so I will call the March 29th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Viana, would you please call the row?
Absolutely. Debbie Moore?
Present.
Patrick Connell?
Here.
Cynthia Meyer?
Here.
Richard Gartman?
Here.
Matt Lassen?
Here.
Cheryl Lee?
Here.
And Diana Rose should be on her way, and we've heard from Alyssa Halli-Schram and Ms. Suzanne Frugé that they're not going to be in attendance.
Have we gotten any information about the new board member, the new little baby board member?
Super healthy, super cute, super bouncy.
We super want pictures.
Okay.
And I see Diana walking through the door. All righty. Item two, comments to be heard from the audience on any topic not listed on the agenda, not to exceed three minutes in length. To address a commission, please submit a fully completed request card to the secretary. Seeing no one here, we will go on to item number three, since we have no citizens to comment. Items for individual consideration. Item 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the February 22, 2018, Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting, and the March 6, 2018 special meeting. Have you all had a chance to look over them? Are there any additions, corrections, deletions?
Motion to approve as is.
Motion to approve by Mr. Connell?
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Any opposition? Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Item 3B, public hearing and consider action to recommend approval of the amendments to Chapter 14 of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Article 14.03, Historic Landmark Preservation to the City Council.
Good evening. So, we are here with an item that was forwarded from the Historic Landmark Commission. To give you a little background on what we're looking at, in 1998 was the first adoption of Section 14.03, Historic Landmark Preservation, which created the preservation requirements and the Historic Landmark Commission. The last ordinance update was done on October 23rd, 2007, which created, I believe, the incentives were the main thing that was created with that update. There was a major revision drafted in 2009, and that went through, Historic Landmark Commission worked on it, it came to P&amp;Z and was recommended for approval to council, and it got to council, and there was, for various reasons, it did not get adopted at City Council, and it was early 2010. So, that kind of brings us to now. This is one of the council goals, is to strengthen our historic preservation efforts, and to do that, updating our ordinance is the way to do that. Additionally, the city would like to apply for, it's called Certified Local Government Status, and the Certified Local Government Program is through the Texas Historical Commission, and you have to meet specific criteria to qualify for that program, and then, once you do, you're able to use some services that the Texas Historical Commission provides, and one of those things is also, they do offer a grant program that helps you with your historic preservation efforts, be it surveys, or design guidelines, or other different projects that cities do in their downtowns and other historic areas. So, to start this effort this year, the Historic Landmark Commission used the previous 2009 draft, which had a lot of good information to start with, and then, the recommendations from the Certified Local Government Program Manager to revise the existing ordinance. I somehow have an extra slide in there. So, generally, we have, the first section is general requirements for historic preservation. We have updated definitions, and we also changed, added some flexibility for the Historic Landmark Commission. Right now, they have very specific rules on what, who has to be in each position, and should we not be able to find someone, this gives council the ability to appoint someone that's knowledgeable, that doesn't necessarily meet that, you know, real estate agent, or those very specific criteria. Additionally, one of the positions that's required by the state and national is a historic preservation officer, and currently, it is assigned to be the Chair of the Commission, and this would move that position to staff, which is a recommendation of the state. In the next section is categories of preservation, and currently, there are two categories, there's significant designations and historic landmark designations in town. They require much of the same criteria, the main difference between the two is that historic landmarks actually, at present, sign a document committing to be a historic landmark and to come to the city for all certificate of appropriateness reviews, whereas, the significant designations do not have to do that, and they don't get the plaque to put on their house. So, in this, that's very confusing, both for staff, citizens, and the state found that confusing in our code, so we've removed the significant designation and just gone down to historic landmarks for specific sites and structures. Additionally, we've created a process for designating historic districts, so this would give the Commission the ability to outline a specific area in town, take that to council, and get it adopted. Certain boundaries, like the historic Main Street, is, there's a national district over that right now, we could adopt a local district that we could then tie to other criteria when people are making additions, or infill, or other changes to that area. And what you do with that is you get design guidelines, that would be the next step to those historic districts, that would give you the guidance for what the historical period for those areas are. We also created a process, we revised the process for the designation of landmarks. Currently, the process, it goes to HLC, comes to y'all, and then goes to City Council. In, to streamline this process a little bit, for just the landmarks, it'll go to HLC and then straight to City Council without coming to P&amp;Z. Gives them a little bit more authority, and cuts out another meeting for the applicant. We also created a process for removal of historic landmarks. Right now, it's just, if people try to withdraw, we don't really have any strict criteria of what that looks like, so this would create the criteria for the board to evaluate whether or not they should be removed from the list, and it would have to have a two-thirds approval of City Council to approve that removal. It also creates the process for designating historic district, and this one, this becomes a zoning overlay, essentially, so, once the boundaries are defined, that would come to P&amp;Z for review of that historic district, and then go to City Council for adoption, and then that district would be reflected on our zoning map. We also have a process for removal of a historic district, which would require 51% of the owners of real property within that district to petition the city to request that removal. And additionally, two-thirds of council would have to approve. So, we currently have a process for certificate of appropriateness. The update clarifies when it's required for a site, a structure, or a sign, and that, currently, that'll be for historic landmarks. Once we adopt districts, then that can be applied within those districts. It defined specific exemptions, what doesn't need a certificate of appropriateness. So, does painting your house need one? No. If you need to replace some boards on your front porch, that does not. So, ordinary maintenance, those kind of things, do not need a certificate of appropriateness. If you're adding on a new front porch to the front of your house, that would. So, those major changes that could affect the look and feel, or the historic quality of the structure, would have to have a certificate of appropriateness. We also define the application procedure, and reference the fee schedule, which we had not done previously. We also created a specific process for a certificate of appropriateness for demolition or relocation. So, demolition is demolishing the house entirely, tear it down. Relocation can be either moving in or moving out a house into the downtown, or a district. This is important, because when you start moving houses around, you can lose your historic character. If you move a house from another part of Texas that's historic, but not historic to Bastrop, that can play with the look and feel, and confuse people on, when you're trying to figure out the date of that house, because it's 100 years old, but it's only five years old to Bastrop. Additionally, if someone's moving a house out of Bastrop, that would possibly need to be reviewed. There are exemptions for unsafe buildings, was moved to the exemptions section, so if the building official deems the structure is unsafe, that does overrule the COA process. So, one of the things that is in our current code is an incentive for designating your house as a historic landmark. This is a property tax rebate that you get once a year, and it's, currently, there's kind of a complicated calculation that's in the code. We revised the section to, it's based off of your amount, your evaluation of historic property, and then, based off of what City Council budgets each year for that refund. Currently, there are no fees adopted for any of our certificate of appropriateness or our consideration of landmarks. This, looking at how exhaustive the process is for staff, and what goes into that, we're proposing for historic landmark designation consideration, $100 fee, a removal of historic landmark or district, $300, a certificate of appropriateness, 50, and for certificate of appropriateness for demolition or relocation would be 100. The Historic Landmark Commission reviewed the current draft at their meeting on February 21st, and forwarded it on to P&amp;Z for your review and recommendations to City Council. The next step is, if P&amp;Z recommends approval, it'll go to the April 10th City Council meeting. If you have some significant revisions, I would recommend that you send it back to the Historic Landmark Commission for their consideration of those changes, and their input if, for those changes. Any questions?
So, as far as moving a historic preservation officer to a staff position, that's a salaried position with the staff?
It would be, it would be a current staff member, it's typically the planning director.
Okay, so someone already left him there?
Yeah, it's not a new position, it would be a new task for an already existing staff member.
And then, what exactly is the difference? Because I know, right now, you say a homeowner applies for historic landmark status, and we're talking about overlay neighborhoods that could then enforce a design standard. What, really, if an overlay neighborhood's created, what's really the distinction between a homeowner who's elected to be a historic site versus everyone who's kind of compelled to be historic?
So, a lot of that gets determined when you develop design guidelines. So, at present, we don't have, once this gets adopted, we still won't have any historic districts, and we won't until we adopt those. And with each historic district, we will need to also adopt design guidelines or design standards. Additionally, we'll want to do a survey of each of those neighborhoods to define contributing and non-contributing structures, so, things that add to the historic character and those that do not. Because if something does not add to the historic character, then it doesn't matter if you change that, you know, add on, demolish that structure, but it's the historic ones within that district. How the design guidelines are drafted, and that'll kind of depend on how, what gets done. So, one of the main things, so like infill, so, right now, there's nothing to control other than our zoning regulations, what a house looks like. So, historic districts could potentially regulate infill.
So, when you're, when an area's being considered for a historic district, is this, you know, citizen comments, people come in, is everyone's got to say?
Yes.
Standards, and whether it's actually accepted?
And everyone in that, everyone that's going to be within the boundaries of that district will be notified during that public hearing process?
Have a chance to object or agree?
Yes, that they'll potentially be in that district.
Okay.
So, and that'll be, that'll be a city-initiated process, when we start looking at those districts. And those district boundaries are usually defined by, kind of like, like periods, like construction standards, all those kind of things. But yes, there will be a lot of public opportunity to speak, because they'll have to come to P&amp;Z for public hearing, and have to go to City Council.
Yeah, and then, anyone else got a question? As far as, kind of, the incentive is concerned, you know, reading the first paragraph of the section 14, you know, it puts forth this great idea that we're here to preserve the heritage of, you know, people who've grown up in the area, and so, when they come back to Bastrop, you know, they kind of always feel like they're coming to their hometown, so, it seems like the city has a pretty strong desire to preserve that, but yet, as you kind of mentioned, this semi-tax refund that isn't really defined in any great way that I've heard, just seems rather a weak incentive to get someone to voluntarily, you know, they say they want to partner with citizens in preserving the area, but all this seems like it's on the citizens to make sure it's preserved, not necessarily the city helping them to do other than imposing standards. Is there any talk about increasing incentive, or at least defining what the incentive is, so people can get it guaranteed, know what's going to happen?
Not, not at present. So, currently, in the code, what is defined at, is that the incentive is somewhere between, it has to be between .15% to .22% of the total valuation of the historic structure, and then, the, based off of that, that's your guidelines, and then, the city budget somewhere in that range, usually, is what happens. So, the last, last year, the percentage of people got back was .17. This year, they're getting right at the .15, because property taxes went, or property evaluations went up quite a bit this last year. So, but the average, the incentive has been somewhere between $200 up to, for some of the commercial properties, over $1,000 per structure. So, that's where we, I think, intend to try to keep it at that target, but it is, council could choose not to budget that line item at all, so, that, because that's how it's currently funded, is every year, the City Council budgets an amount to go to that program. So, I don't know if that's really answered your question, but...
No, it is, it's just, the same thing, it's just a rather weak incentive, it seems. I know that, speaking with many people, and again, I don't know Houston standards or anything like that, but other cities have very strong kind of programs in order to get people to voluntarily take on this task of preserving our heritage, and, you know, if it's of value to the city to have an old historic home, there should be a pretty easy equation to put a monetary thank you to that, as we're going to force you to, you know, get siding milled a certain way, here's a little extra money to help you with that, for beautifying our town. So, anyway, just adding, it was more a curiosity.
Yeah, and I can add that comment to the report when it goes to City Council.
I just wanted to get some clarification. So, we talked about how like, if, you know, you're repairing, simple maintenance is, you know, doesn't require anything, to what extent do we include maintenance? Like, if I have a cracked, single, old, single paint window, and I want to replace it, you know, to be more efficient, or something like that, would that be considered something that needed approval, or is that still kind of within the maintenance realm, or how does that?
If you're replacing with like things?
Dave would smile.
It's considered, maybe Dave has something else. Oh, is this, if you're replacing with a like product, so, if you're replacing a column that's rotted out with the same type of, style of column, or the same type of window, then that's just ordinary maintenance?
Does that have the same type of material, or does it look like?
Typically, well, my experience has been look like, the historic windows, so...
And the reason I got up is windows replacements can be a problem sometimes. We want to make sure that they use a historically accurate, you know, window pane, you know, two over two, instead of just a solid window, like a lot of people want to put in for energy. And I make energy-efficient windows that match the style, it's just, we need to make sure that they do that.
That's why I picked it as an example, it's one of those things where it's like, you know, you redo all the windows, but it tends to be an upgrade, and, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, the rebate was not so much as incentive to do it, as much as it was the city trying to kick back and getting you to use that money to maintain the home, is that, is that not the intent?
I think that was the original intention.
The rebate's not, and it's so much an incentive to like designate your home, it's more like, we'd like you to keep it looking nice, so, you know, take this $1,000 you normally pay in taxes, and put it towards maintaining the house, so, I think calling it incentive is a little bit misleading, if that's how we're phrasing it, it's more of like a, you know, maintenance rebate than anything, so...
And the Chair of the Historic Landmark Commission is also here, if you have any historical questions that go back to the creation of the HLC.
Any other members have questions?
I just have one, that's kind of an unusual question, but what if a property owner, in an area that would be a district, had buildings, and either they were there, they were moved in, they weren't historical, but a sign was put up by the owner that said historical district?
The owner just puts up a ding?
Yeah, what would, would that just confuse, I mean, it could stay and just confuse everyone that...
Yeah, it wouldn't be unofficially adopted, anything, they could put up their own sign, but...
Right, that would just be them labeling it themselves.
Yeah, and we do have our own, we do have city plaques that, for the local historic landmarks, we, when they are designated as a landmark, they do get that plaque to put on their house.
Right.
So, we have an official plaque, and then, right now, we do have the street signs that say historic district, even though we don't technically have a historic district, it's a general historic district. But I would imagine, as we start to designate those historic districts, we will brand each one of those neighborhoods with new street signs that identify those districts, so, I think, if people want, I mean, we can't really stop people from putting up fake, their own interpretation of things, but they won't be something that's represented in our office.
Right.
We do have several methods, we've talked about it extensively in the Historic Landmark Commission, about how to make sure people know their properties are historic landmarks, or that they're in the district, and we have, one of the things that we're going to, we do is we record the historic landmark designation at, with the county clerk's office, so it does pull up with your title search, and then, our zoning maps will reflect any historic district, so, that's, so people should know if they're really in one or not, so...
Are there any, does it contain any exemptions, or is it a problem to solve, but are there any exemptions for current homeowners in a district who are not historical, but would have to rebuild? For example, if my home's not historical, but it burns down, and now I have to build new, would I be subject to the historical building requirements? Would I be exempt? What if I had to, you know, what if building to those historical requirements put me over a budget to rebuild my home, you know, and whatnot, is there an exemption?
We don't have those requirements yet, so that's the, that's the next step in this process. Right now, we're just creating the ability to create a historic district.
Okay.
We don't, we don't, we don't have a city historic district for any part of town yet. So, during that process, that'll be one of the things that gets, I'm sure we'll get debated and discussed, is to what extent are we going to make people match the period? Does it, some cities don't require infill to follow, especially in the residential neighborhoods, and sometimes, those things, like in our Form-based code currently, we don't require you to follow a specific historical standard, but we do require you to add on features that match kind of that, the look and feel of downtown, front porches, or awnings on your windows, basic things that kind of dress up your house, but aren't necessarily to a specific period. So, I, we'll be looking at that full range of things.
So, are we saying that each historic district overlay would have to have that type of provision in it?
Yes.
And so, would it not make more sense then to just put it in the, in this, what we're looking at, so it applies to all those districts for a situation like that, or an exemption that might apply everywhere?
I don't...
Not everywhere, but to all historic districts?
Yeah, I think that's going to, two things are going to determine that. One is what the district is, and why you're designating that as district, and then, what design guidelines you want to impose, and who you're going to impose that on. Actually, as a matter of fact, and something you all have adopted since the last time this was discussed, the Form-based code, to a large extent, creates buildings that are roughly compatible, you know, we're not necessarily, we may or may not want to require all new buildings to look 100 years old, we just want to make sure that they're the same size, massing, general shape, and the Form-based code already does that to a large extent.
Okay.
Most of the design guidelines really apply to what do you do to the historic buildings that are already there.
Okay.
You don't strip off the historic commercial facade and throw up a 1980s-style facade.
Right, okay.
So, just, just to make sure I understand, so, for instance, if his house was on a street where all the houses are a craftsman-style house, his burned down, but maybe his wasn't that style before, would he be then, would it be compelled upon him to now build a craftsman-style new house, so that he, his house now matches the rest of the homes on that street, or in that district?
I don't think that he would be compelled to have to build to that style, because the design guidelines, a well-crafted set of design guidelines will give you options of different, it kind of gives you a scope without having to design your house for you. So, as, it would more, make sure, instead of, if you, if your 1,500 square foot house burned down, it would more keep you from building a 4,000 square foot house in that place, that dwarfs the houses next to it. That's more, that's what it would control, rather than the strict way it looked. Is that, you kind of see, especially coming out of Austin, you've seen that where...
It makes sense.
Yeah. Okay.
Anyone else? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve as is, send it to council.
Your second? Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jennifer. We'll adjourn the regular meeting and go into, you're jumping out of your seat, you want to say something before we go to workshop? Okay, all right. We adjourn the regular meeting and go into workshop. So, item four. 4A is to discuss and update on the draft subdivision ordinance. Mr. Gaddis?
Well, as my kids would always say, are we there yet? We're getting closer. So, we had our last workshop, the first of the month, on March 6th, where we looked at the second half of the ordinance, so I want to talk a little bit tonight about what revisions I've made to the ordinance since then, and I, what you have in your packet is up-to-date, with the exception of a couple of things that I caught, and I'll talk about those. And then, also, you'd asked for an executive summary, and somebody threw out five pages, and I don't know why you were so astute at that, but it turned out to be five pages long, so that was included, so, that's in your packet to look at, and then, we'll use that primarily to talk to other people about it, so they don't have to read all 150 pages, they can just look at the five pages. Joint City Council/P&amp;Z Work Session has still not yet been scheduled, I am still pushing to try to get something onboard, but we have made a little progress. I do have authorization to talk to the county, and the county is one of the first people I was going to reach out to, anyway. As it turns out, they reached out to me, because even though it's not public, it's public because it's on your agenda, so, you know, there've been quite a few people that have been following along, and the county was one of those. So, they want to talk about some items specifically on parkland dedication, because we are now requiring parkland dedication in the ETJ outside our city, with the idea that if we're going to annex those areas, we want to make sure that there's parks there to handle that, but it gets into the issue of who's going to maintain those parks. As it's currently written, we've got it set up for an HOA to manage them, but it may be, make more sense to have the county or the city do that, and actually, it may be different regulations in different parts of the ETJ. And we'll talk about some other issues that they have. So, we do have a meeting scheduled with them next Wednesday, and we'll probably go through the ordinance fairly thoroughly, and kind of pick up on some of the things that they may have. And once I can get the meeting scheduled with council, and the plan would be to reach out to home builders, developers, and the public, to start getting input from them. So, let's talk about what we've done since March 6th. One of the first things was to establish a threshold for plating. The question came up, are we going to make everybody, and this is getting away from the lot of record to a plat, what would actually trigger that? So, just to put some numbers in, I put for new buildings or building additions less than 125 square feet, so you could put a small shed in your backyard, if you're going to build a big shed, or you're going to make a big addition to your house, then that's probably going to trigger the plating process. We would exempt fences, signs, or flatwork.
Real quick, does that, does that also tie into, I know we talked about it, like, if I need to get an electrical permit, none of that stuff?
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't change the footprint, or... Yeah, if you don't, if you don't change the footprint, or you only change the footprint 120 square feet or less, it doesn't require plating.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
We did put a reference in there on the title search when we're showing easements and stuff on plats. You know, part of the idea of plating is so that we can get all the recorded easements shown on the plat, so people know what's going on. We had a, an issue not too long ago where somebody came in and platted and forgot to put on a drainage easement, which rendered one of their lots completely useless. And so we want to just kind of reassure that they've gone through a title search to make sure that that's been done. 500-year flood zone. We had talked last time about extending some regulations into the 500-year, and what we were talking about at that time was to, we have a two-foot freeboard right now. 100-year flood, we call that the base flood elevation. And then we, as a freeboard, we require that houses be built two feet above that, so that if the flood gets up to the 100-year, you still have some protection to your house. The plan was to have two-foot of freeboard in the 100-year, and then we would do a one-foot freeboard in the 500-year for a period, for a distance of 100 feet or so. And I got to thinking about that, and that really didn't make sense, because what you end up is two foot above the BFE near the river, and then you have houses that are only one foot above, so they actually be lower, and so they would be at greater risk. So what I've done is I've rewritten it to say it'll be two foot above the BFE extending into the 500-year flood level. Now, flood plane. Now, the 500-year flood may actually be big, more than two feet, but the two foot above provides a lot more protection to homes than what we're currently doing. And just as a reminder, FEMA doesn't require that you be anything above the 100-year flood and doesn't require any regulation in the 500. But so what we're doing, we're extending that two foot out into the 500. Way I came up with that was, I had, Harris County is actually requiring two foot above the 500-year flood level, which is actually pretty high, but they just had a horrible event. Now, the city of Houston was also considering a similar regulation. They were supposed to vote on that this week, but they're getting a lot of pushback from their development community, so they have not voted on that. I think the one, the two foot above the 100-year level is a reasonable step that helps provide better protection.
David, I've got a quick question for you.
Sure.
On these floodplains, 100 and 500 years that FEMA sets, how often do they update them, and can we request that they review them and update them based on changes?
They, as a general rule, but not hard and fast, it's about every 10 years they get around to redoing it. And a big part of that's just funding for the federal. We can pay to have them redone, but that can be a pretty significant expense. And so what we do is in the interim, we do individual changes. Now, as it turns out, we do have a project going on where we're revising the, or looking at the flood model for Gilz Branch and Piney Creek. And presumably, those revisions will get incorporated into some amendments to the floodplain. But as far as doing citywide or countywide, it's usually about once every 10 years.
Okay, so we, we can do isolated ones based on what we've learned and seen. Okay, thank you.
And as developments occur, we do what are called conditional letters of map revision or CLOMERS, or letters of map revision or LOMERS. We require developers to do those as a condition to develop. Anytime they're encroaching into the floodplain, we require them to update the flood maps.
I want to jump in real quick, because I see we're going by page numbers, and so there's a, and it's not up here, but we added a definition of legal lot of record.
Yes.
That's great. My suggestion or what I want thoughts from everybody is adding a definition for an illegal lot. Because the questions come up, you know, so illegal lot is something that, that we use when we talk about this stuff. But I think if, if somebody calls up the office and they're like, well, your lot's illegal, the question is, is well, how is it, how is it illegal? Because I've paid to have it surveyed, and it's got its own tax ID number, and why is it illegal?
Okay.
And while I realize that the definition of illegal may be exactly the opposite of illegal lot of record, I'm just wondering if it's worth adding for clarification for the average citizen user of-
Yeah, we could do that. Same issue we have sometimes with plat.
Right.
You know, I got a plat when I bought the property. Well, that's not a plat that the city recognizes.
Right.
Plat just means plat, so.
So at least that way, when we tell somebody it's an illegal lot, there's a definition of that, and they can go and check that and say, oh, okay, well, I see what we're getting at.
Somebody gonna jot that down? Back when we were talking about low-impact development, you all raised the question of having some more teeth to require that. So if you recall, I had kind of a, a list of about a dozen different things that they could do. And basically, I'm just saying, developer, try to do at least two of those. So give them the flexibility to try to see what they can incorporate as far as low-impact development. There was a question about wildfire zones and what applied as a wildfire zone. So I make, have a reference to the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service, Texas Wildfire Risk Assessment Portal, which actually defines areas of risk for fire. So you can go to that and see where in the city applies to that, and then we will put those on our planning maps. A lot of discussion about street naming procedures, and while I was going through the ordinance, I discovered that we had street naming in two different spots, so I ended up combining the two and kind of corrected the proper process to do that, and then gave some flexibility with ultimate authority at staff level. Did want to make sure that you all knew that we're revising the standard pavement design that we're requiring for asphalt streets. Currently, we only require one and a half inches of asphalt on eight inches of base material, and that's pretty minimal. That's rural county road standards. So I'm putting in a more common city standard of six inches of asphalt. It's, it's two inches of one type of asphalt and then four inches of the other. Go ahead.
Does that include any repaving that the city does on current streets?
We will generally apply our own standards to ourselves.
Okay, okay. All right.
Having said that, I'm not in charge of the public works department.
Generally.
Page 100, that was the big one that you all wanted me to look at, was some standards for private streets. So I've added a whole new section on private streets and gated communities. And some of you have picked up that I borrowed that from a previous city I worked at. And in fairness, I probably wrote it back when I was there, so I'm not sure it was copyright infringement. But it, it provides for where you can do private streets and gated communities, what kinds of design requirements. In particular, we're looking at the gates and entry areas. Make sure that when you pull into a private street, do you have a way to get out? Because sometimes you pull into some of these places and you get out, back out because you can't get through the gate. Addressing how to convert public streets to private streets, and then private streets back to public streets, because that can get kind of thorny sometimes. And then how that, those streets get maintained. And so what we're requiring is that each of the HOAs have a road maintenance reserve fund that we require minimum contributions to, and then we have the right to audit that, so that if there is a road failure, we know that they have the funds to be able to fix it, and they don't suddenly start coming to the city and say, hey, come fix it for us. That was a big change, so if you've got questions, I'm happy to look at those.
Actually, David, I just have a comment. As I read through it, as I remember our discussion last time about, should we even consider, I think what you've got in there gives us the option as a city, if we think it's appropriate. You've given us a mechanism to put it in place if we want to. Either existing one's going private or private one's going. So I think it's a nice section of wording you put in there. Thank you.
Yeah, you, as part of the plating process, you can decide whether you would want to allow private streets or not. Okay, going on, I did put some provisions in there for alternate driveway design, and a little later on, we talked about alternate driveway paving. Question has come up is, do we really need, in fact, I think your current ordinance calls for 14-foot wide concrete paving for, or asphalt paving for all residential driveways. This gives a little bit of flexibility, that you could do the two-track paving if you wanted, and then you could actually look at some alternate paving types. Again, the city engineer would be the one reviewing those. Page 112, we're addressing rural sidewalk maintenance. Again, this is out in the county in the ETJ. City wouldn't be maintaining it. Well, the county doesn't want to maintain it either. So just provisions for if you do sidewalks, or if you do pedestrian systems, that that's part of the HOA's responsibility.
David, on, on your driveway section there on page 108.
Uh huh.
One of the, a question kind of came up, was I went back and read that one again. And it gets into the discussion about two-car width, two-car driveways. And I know last time they said, well, if it's tandem, yeah, so you've got a single door. I'm almost wondering if we ought to put something in there that says the driveway must be wide enough to accommodate the, the width of the, the doors and the vehicles, so somebody doesn't stick an undersized drive on there where two cars can barely fit, people are stepping off into plants.
Well, I'm not sure that that's not their choice.
Okay.
You know, if it was me, I would probably want to be able to step out onto a sidewalk or something like that. But what we're trying to do is give some flexibility so that we're not requiring a lot of pavement when it may not be desired or necessary.
Yeah, because I know it's in the single car section, it said 11 for a single car. Then we get to two-car, it says 11 up to 24. I'm going, okay, the upper end works, but if someone's got a 16-foot wide garage door, and they go, oh, I only need 11 feet, are we setting ourselves up for an issue there?
I, conceivably, but it's probably not likely.
Okay.
I feel like it's kind of like a free market thing. Like the builder does something, or developer does something stupid like that, people are gonna notice and go, I think I want to move there.
And then part of that driveway width is really to address the width of the driveway at the street. We don't want a situation where they have, their entire street frontage is a drive approach coming in. There are some people who try to do that. We want to narrow that down to the minimum necessary to be able to serve their particular drive. Page 113, we talked about, they have a threshold for what it would take to upgrade parking lots. And so if you're just gonna redo your parking lot, fine, go ahead and redo it. If you're going to add on to your building by 10% or more, we want you to bring it up to at least current standards. And there are some alternate paving lot provisions in there now. But we have some people who really don't have any pavement on their parking lots. And so at some point in time, we want to trigger at least to bring that up. I heard somebody say that, you know, driving through potholes in a parking lot was part of the experience. So maybe that's, that gets to the free market too, I guess. But anyway, we're, we're, we're adding a threshold, but we're giving a lot of flexibility. 120, we talked about revising the minimum finished floor elevation, 500-year flood. And you'll notice at the very beginning of the ordinance, a lot of the stuff we're putting in here really needs to be reflected in other parts of the code. And so we do have a flood damage prevention ordinance, so this reference to minimum floor elevation needs to be incorporated in that. Likewise, when we talk about clearing out the forest, the 30-foot buffer zone, that really needs to be in the nuisance section, et cetera. Page 126, added more teeth to the runoff quality treatment. As you recall, there I had a list of about eight or nine different things that you could do for runoff quality. Again, that's not legally required that you address runoff quality, but we're trying to do a more environmentally sustainable, it's kind of the right thing to do. And so basically, of those eight or nine, you know, just try to do one. And it may or may not work, but at least the engineer will have a chance to look at that. And then on 149, you know, I'd mentioned the dark sky ordinance. Well, that's really a section called exterior lighting standards. It's in the zoning ordinance, so I've made that proper reference back. I am going to update that section because we now reference LED lights as our lighting standard, and then the rest of the text talks about high-pressure sodium or low-pressure sodium. And so I want to make sure that we have the right numbers in the right place.
Yeah, it's, I remember last time we got into the discussion was like, what's, what do we really have and what's need? It triggered me, and I started doing some research into street lightings and high-pressure sodiums and LEDs. And what I found is, cities are all over the map on this one. The only thing that I found consistent, and it was kind of almost a lesson learned, that some cities did it and they had to go back and redo it. They went in and stuck in the bright white LED lights, and then they went, yes, this works, but this is really ugly in my city, and they had to go back and change them. I think what we need to specify is LEDs, but specify what they call amber LEDs. And these are in the, and they use this designation of K, 2,200K to 3,000K, which kind of brings them out of that bright white down more towards that amber or yellow. So it looks more like kind of what we have here in the downtown area, lights that are in that range, but they're the LEDs. And maybe I think what we want to do is, is go in that direction, say LEDs, we'll call them the amber LEDs and define them that way.
Yeah, I've ordered some design manuals from the Illumination Engineering Society, and two of them, one is on just street lighting standards, and then they also have a, a design guideline on basically doing dark sky ordinance lighting. So between those two, I hope that we can get to. And just as a kind of reference, if you want to just kind of drive around and look at streetlights, it used to be everything was mercury vapor, and they're kind of a bluish tint.
Yeah.
Then they went to low-pressure sodium, which is kind of a orange tint, and then the high-pressure sodium is kind of a yellow tint. Cities were doing that change because they're increasingly more efficient, but they have different lighting sta, I mean, a lot of people don't like the orange and yellows because it kind of washes people out at night. And, but, but we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, and actually, if the newest section of Hunter's Crossing has the high-pressure or has the LED bright white in them.
Yeah.
So, and the old section has the older high-pressure sodium lights in it. So, I mean, you're right there, one area, you can see the contrast between the two.
So that's where we're at. Like I said, I'll start meeting with the county next week, and then hopefully, we can schedule that joint meeting with council, and then we can do some public outreach and be moving ahead. But I'm open for questions at this point.
I'll for one want to thank you and Jennifer and the staff for the hard work and the many hours that you've put into this. And I also want to congratulate this commission for the six hours that we've put into this, the research that's been done between meetings. And I think we've come up with an excellent product that the city will be able to use, and the county, in the years to come. That will make sure that we have the kind of city that we want, and that the tail doesn't wag the dog. And I want to thank you. And please let the, the council know that this commission has worked very hard to get through this in a timely manner, and we're just waiting on them. We're not pushing, but we haven't voted on every, anything yet, but we're waiting for the city. We've done our work. Thank you.
Okay, I'll pass on.
Anything else?
I did, well, I don't have a question, but I was given a question by somebody else in discussing this. So I'm gonna ask you, so you can, you can answer it. How do these apply to somebody doing something on their house that they currently have that's already in existence within the city? Like if I wanted to redo my driveway, or I wanted to, you know, redo the sidewalk or something like that, how would that apply to those people? If at all?
Obviously, this ordinance didn't apply until you adopt it. So the current regulations are what currently apply.
I'm sorry, when this is, when this, when the final draft goes into effect, would this, would this affect anything in its current or only new stuff?
Well, like I said, it's really the triggers that I've mentioned earlier, that depending on what they did. If they're just doing flatwork, or they're just putting up a small shed or a fence or something like that, this really doesn't apply to them.
I just have one question. When this is posted for public to see, alongside that, does it also let them know that there will be time in the future for public comment? Because I've heard a lot of people commenting, and I want them to be sure that they know they do have a chance to do that. Will that be on the site also?
Yeah, well, when we put out the formal notice, it'll be in preparation of some public meetings.
Good.
Anything else? Thank you. 4B, discussion on the draft mobile food vendor ordinance. Yippee. We don't need subdivision ordinance, yeah.
No, no, we're in workshops and neither of these items.
Just in workshops, so we don't take any action in workshops.
Yeah. This is just for information and discussion, but yeah, no action. So the item we're talking about tonight- item we're talking about tonight is mobile food vendors. So as, the city gets a lot of requests for these. People, they're a popular business model. They do serve as an incubator for future restaurants. So we have a lot of interest of, in people setting up in different spots around town. Our current codes are not very clear and do not have concise standards of where they're allowed, how they're allowed, all those things. Are, we have a mobile, we have a vendors, peddlers, and solicitors section of the code that's about 20 some odd years old or more. And it more applies to people going door to door and doing those kind of activities, not necessarily mobile food, which is kind of a more intensive use. So kind of in some of the background, some concerns you hear in other cities, this does compete sometimes with your existing brick and mortar restaurants. And so that's another thing to keep in mind while we're looking at possible rules. So the definition that we have of a mobile food vendor is any business that operates or sells food for human consumption, hot or cold, from a non-stationary location within the city of Bastrop. So something that is able to move around from site to site. I actually managed to post pictures to make this a little more interesting. So we've kind of defined three different types of vehicles, structures for this. The first is your food truck, which is, it's got a motor in it. It moves all by itself and can go from site to site. You have food trailers, which need a truck to pull them. And then your third category is your food or concession cart. That's your kind of typical hot dog cart or your ice cream cart that someone has to push around or bike around without a motor. So we've, staff has looked at ordinances from across the state, Austin, Buta, College Station. And we've kind of pulled from different ordinances, some ideas. So this is just a rough draft. We're not bringing this forward for adoption. We've still got more discussion to have on this. But this is, we're throwing this out here and get, to get everyone's feedback. So we have, we've set this up with the first criteria is general requirements. These would apply to all mobile food vendors. First one is zoning districts. Where are they allowed? And in the draft that I gave you, it defines specific zoning districts where they're allowed by right, which are typically where you already currently allow a restaurant use. And then also specifically for the downtown areas where you do have, commercial use is very close to residential, there are some requirements for a conditional use permit if someone chooses to do a concentrated food court of mobile food vendors. If anyone wants to locate on public property or a city right of way, that would require an additional level of city approval. So if someone wants to be in a city parking lot or park in the street, that would have to be approved through a, through a separate level, usually with our public works or the parks, whoever owns, whoever manages that public, or even the county lots. Those property owners would have to sign off. All trucks would need to follow state and county food and health rules. The county of Bastrop is the one who does all of our food inspection, restaurant inspections. So, and there's actually a specific code that covers mobile food vendors at the state level. Employees must have food handler certificates. This is just something that we want to make sure that anyone operating a food truck, so not, so it's not just the person. We've had people that literally want to set up a camper in their front yard and have their kids sell hamburgers. That's not going to be something that's allowed.
Is this food handler, is this the Texas state food handler certificate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Must have a contract with an approved commissary. So what that means is you have to have all of your water and wastewater contained within the unit. And you have to have a provider that comes and services that for you. So we don't want trucks, the idea is they need to be mobile. And if they are tapping into our water and wastewater, they are not, they are no longer mobile. So they need to have those self-contained on the unit and have a contract with someone who's coming and refilling the water and disposing of the waste properly. Proper ventilation and fire suppression will be required. And then current state registrations and license plates for all vehicles that are associated with the truck. So a truck pulling the trailer, the food truck itself, all of those would need to be current on their registrations.
Jennifer, on the commissary.
Mm-hmm.
How could that, how would we monitor that?
So one of the requirements that we have in the current draft is that they would have to get a 90-day permit. So every 90 days, they would need to turn that into us to show they have an active contract.
And they have a, have a contract with the commissary?
Yes.
And the commissary is really, you know, some people make their food onsite, but there's a lot of people who get their food offsite. And well, the commissary is where they're getting that food from. So we want to make sure that it's been inspected and it's licensed as well. So it's not just water and wastewater, it's the food itself.
So, so could HEB, could HEB be a commissary?
If it registers with the state, yeah.
Okay, but if it, but if it didn't, then?
It wouldn't, wouldn't be legal under this regulation.
Okay.
And for that matter, wouldn't be legal under the county regulations either.
Okay.
Question for you on the fires, ventilation, fire suppression. Does this follow the fire codes for enforcement? Or would that be handled?
It would be the, yeah, the fire, our fire code would be, our fire rules would be what governs. So.
Okay.
So what if you have a, okay. This is just something that comes to mind when I see these parks that are set up in Austin. So let's say you have an actual park that's set up for trailers, and they have their own water and wastewater that is provided. So that's just something I wanted to throw out there.
That was one of my considerations. Once we got down into the, further into the ordinance was if you have a food court that's set up, you know, for that purpose, that, you know, if you had like a universal tap for those types of things, it might.
Yeah. Water and restrooms is the big issue with food trucks. And so the requirements that we're proposing is that if there is a food truck park, they're retired to have a restroom and water facility available, not only for the employees, but for the customers as well. If it's a standalone food truck, often people are not there long enough that we really need that. But we often need to have an agreement between the food truck and an adjacent business so that the employees have someplace to go. So, yeah, that tends to be the big issue a lot.
And the last requirement is that the units be self-contained. So especially for a standalone unit, no additional add-ons that you're building on or pop-ups that get added to the site would be allowed.
So my only question with that is if I had, so to have a single vendor, you have to have an established business. And they're just, you know, taking up space. If the established business has a storage, something outside that they want to let them use, does that fall within the way we've drafted it so far?
That would be part of the primary business. So it would, it wouldn't fall in.
Even if that space is leased or used by just the single vendor?
Yeah, it would still be under the primary business's site plan and all, and what they've had permitted. If that, that group leaves, it will still stay there. I'm, it's mostly trying to get away from, if you go out in the county, you see some pretty extensive structures that have been built where they can pull the truck up to it. And I'm trying to get away from some of that.
That's fine. I'm just, I'm just, in my head, I'm thinking of, you know, like if I store tables and chairs and everything else in a unit that's provided by the primary business, would that fall underneath that? That was it.
So then we've broken this down into two specific kind of uses. The one is the single vendor that would go on an established property site. So it must be located on a private property that has an occupied primary business. So you'll see those often with a car wash. Or we have, we have some around town that have been around for a while and they predate me. So I'm unsure exactly what processes all of those went through to be located where they are. But, so like with a car wash, you see those. They don't take up a lot of space. People eat there while they're getting their car washed. With a gas station. So they would have to be with a business that does have an active certificate of occupancy. If it's a vacant business, that wouldn't be allowed. Some of the rules, cannot take up required parking. So if you only have two parking spots, they can't take up the only two parking spots on the whole lot. You can't locate in the required setbacks or the fire lanes. It must be located on a paved surface with additional space for walk-up and park traffic.
Got a question about that one.
Mm-hmm.
And I know further on there, you talk about it can't be in parks either. But for the patriotic festival, and I think also for the Halloween fest, they did have some, some vendors down there, some mobile vendors in Fisherman's Park. Could they get a special use permit or a one-time permit?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's, so that's one of the.
And it would be a wrap, so it wouldn't be all in paved.
And that's one of the things we're, we're still going to try to work out with the other departments, is that we're dealing with the, the private vendor who wants to go on private property. We will have probably additional steps for those city events or other public events, that they'll go through the special event process. Or even if the parks decide to contract with some kind of concession service that goes in the parks. That would be in addition to, and would be able to work their permits specifically for Electricity provided by a generator. So basically electricity not connected to the primary business.
But I'm going to jump in here. So, and I want everybody else's thoughts too. So as I'm reading through this, and I made all these my little notes, my preference would be to require connection to the primary business's electrical. And my thought process is, is that if you have a generator running onsite, you're going to do a couple of things. You're going to, I think you're going to create some noise pollution for the current business. I think if you are, you know, walking up and you're going to try and stay and enjoy a food, you got the, you know, you got the generator running. And if we're requiring them to connect to, you know, have like a universal way to connect to that business, and they can decide between the business and the vendor how they want to reimburse that or if they don't want to. I, I see that as a benefit to creating like a nice, you know, enjoyable place where you would want to eat, where you're not hurting the, you know, the current business and whatnot. Same thing for the food park. As we get further into that one, you know, if you're going to, if we're going to have a food court designed for these structures, it makes sense to require those to hook up and not give them the option necessarily to run generators. Because if we have a food court of four or five trucks and everybody's running a generator.
Yeah.
It's, you know, so that's, that's my thought. I don't know what anybody else thinks about it.
Well, I've been to the Magnolia Market, and she has a big food court with all the vendor trucks. And I, maybe I just didn't notice, but I don't remember generators and all of that for each of, each of those trucks at all. It seemed like it was a situation where, kind of like an RV park, you know, you can hook up and, and you can, you know, have, have what you need for, for power and for water and for wastewater if necessary. Though that's usually not right there anyway.
Not only that, but my thought is, is the noise pollution, not just for that current business, but neighboring businesses as well.
When you get into the, so if I had a truck next to a business, I think that wouldn't be between the food truck and the business. But I, if it was my business and somebody, there was an extra piece of land there that somebody got a permit to use, I don't know that I would want them to hook up to my, my electricity. I think, I think that would be something that the two parties would have to determine. I don't think that it's favorable. I think in most cases, the business probably wouldn't be favorable for it.
For a food truck park, it's, makes sense to go ahead and put electrical hookups in there. For a single site where there's an existing business, that it may not be cost-effective to run electrical. And I'm not sure that we want to have extension cords laying around all over the place. So we can talk with the building official and see what kind of electric code requirements might be. But.
I would agree that this is not ideal for the business. But I think from, from like the community standpoint, you know, that's, you know, big, I picture a generator that, you know, needs to run a bigger truck. And, you know, I picture the size and the sound that goes with that. And so if I'm set up legally on this piece of property, then this neighbor has to deal with it. You know, there's, there's no real provision to stop them, you know. Or they call and it's a nuisance. And so, you know, the PD will shut them down because they're being a bother. And we kind of get up in this, you know, this weird tangle.
Wouldn't the business have to agree to it?
To?
To allow them to use their electricity?
Right. So that would be part of, you know, I would assume the business would have a lease with, with any mobile vendor. You know, it's not just like, hey, pull up on a Saturday, set up shop and do your thing. I'm sure there'd be some type of agreement in place anyway. And so then that's.
Who's being responsible? How, so, but then you would get into who pays for what part of the electricity?
But that's all, that would be a private agreement that wouldn't have to be regulated by the city if the, if the business owner says, hey, you know, you pay me a hundred bucks each weekend and we'll just include electricity. Or, hey, you're going to pay me a hundred bucks plus 50 bucks for the electricity you're going to use for the weekend. That would be a private deal between them based on their agreement. I'm just, and it may not be favorable for the business, you know, to hook up. But I'm, I'm thinking not so much what's good for the business, but what's going to be good for the people that are around that area, especially if we're setting up in downtown or things like that. We have a festival or something going on, and there's lots of people walking around. And we have food trucks set up all over and generators running all over the place. It's just, that's kind of what I'm thinking about it. So, maybe on my face, and that's totally fine too.
Well, we'll look into it, particularly on the electrical safety part of it.
Well, and I guess as far as the electrical, the cords and all of that, there's obviously codes about distance and length of cord. So maybe just require the food truck to be within a certain distance if they're going to use the electricity from the primary business.
Not only that, but this.
And then if they're a certain distance away, of course, then they use a generator.
This current one requires extension cords anyway, from the generator to the unit. The way it's, the way it's already written, we're already using extension cords to bring electricity to the unit.
Well, yes, but.
And I would assume there's some type of health or safety that has the distance, the generator can't be within a certain distance of the unit. So we're already, you know, kind of dealing with those. I guess it would just be a matter of how to hook those up to a business.
And we'll look into that.
I, it's, one, just kind of one left coming up. I think from the standpoint of saying you must use a generator versus you can't use business, I think we need to leave that open and let the situation decide what's the best combination for it. Versus here, we're saying you have to do this, but you can't do this. Let's figure out a way to make it work so we can be dynamic. Because what works over here is probably not going to work there. But let's, let's give ourselves some flexibility in this one.
The, I think I say really quickly, just on that, that as well as the cords, I mean, a business has, you know, a 20-amp, 110-volt circuit that someone could tie into, which I don't know what the energy requirements are of food trucks. But something tells me the fire code's not going to be happy with a big truck plugging into 120-amp breaker and, and running.
And I think that's the, yeah, question.
Oh, I was just, I'm sorry. My son's at a track meet, and I just had to take that call. But I just wanted y'all to tell me what you think define what a paved surface is.
You keep reading, you keep reading my mind. I'm just going to sit there and you can come back up here.
Yeah.
Why do you go by this step? I was going to use it with that.
I was going to wait till we get further into the, into the, some of this stuff. But for the food, for the food court, we're requiring paved surface to be used throughout for all those. And so my question was going to come up during that section in that what are we considering? In fact, I wrote down definition of what we're considering a paved surface.
Currently with our code, we consider paved surface either an asphalt or a concrete surface.
Okay.
We, we don't at present have construction standards for crushed granite or any of those alternatives.
I'll save my question for that till we get to the food court portion.
And then the last one is must have an agreement to use a permanent restroom facility within 150 feet of the food vendor. Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, basically that means you'd have to be within 150 feet of a building to, to meet that requirement.
I have a question. So I, are we talking about sit-down vendors? Because I don't really frequent food trucks, but I usually, when I go to one, grab my food and go. So I don't need a restroom facility. So what is the thought process behind having to require a restroom facility? I get the generator or some type of electricity, of course. But I think in most situations, especially with a single vendor, aren't they just walk up, ride and go?
It honestly depends. That's, that's some of the fun of trying to craft these mobile food vendor ordinances, is you're kind of covering a wide variety. We have the people who want to drive around to construction sites. We have the people who want to drive to McCoy's and Home Depot and stay there an hour. And then we have the people who want to be there 24/7 all the time. So it, you've got a full range of what is considered a mobile food vendor and what their business model is for each of those. We have Yolies across the street that's been there for years. So you have all those different levels and trying to create an ordinance that covers all those is.
I think part of that too was for the employees to have a place to use the restroom and wash their hands, which is. and wash their hands, which is, I think that's what...
And one of the other things that we will do, we'll, we have to meet with the county on these rules to make sure we're not in conflict with any of the health district, but that one, we did meet with them initially and they did bring up that I, that some kind of level of restroom facilities are generally required for restaurants. So that's something we'll run by them too on that requirement, so.
Does Yolies have one? I've never paid attention.
They're technically actually on the same lot as the laundromat, so I think they're within, because they use the same services as the laundromat. Any questions on the individual and we'll move on to the food court? Okay, so a food court would be, so this, so you could have the primary use on a lot be a food court for multiple vendors. So one of the, so kind of where we're going with this, if you read between the two things, we don't want a single person just to set up on a vacant lot, which is one of the requests we get frequently. Well, I just want to go on this corner and on 95 and sell, but that creates parking problems, it creates other things. So if you're going to have a standalone site, it will be, need to be the primary use and designed for that use. So a site plan will probably be required to show where each vendor will go, provide, you know, electricity if they're going to provide the hookups for those units, and then also show where they're going to have parking or off-site parking that'll be able to reach the site for both the vendors and any potential visitors.
At some, it's not been serious conversation, but at times there've been mentions of maybe having food trucks on Saturdays across the street at the former's market. And those folks would be there just for a few hours and then leave. I have, I think I read in here that there's some consideration for how many, how many hours a truck is going to remain on a site?
One hour or less.
One hour or less? I don't think, I think it's more than that.
Yeah, so that was for construction sites because we have had with our larger developments that are going up around town, we have had people request to, to travel from site to site and sell. And a lot of those are in zoning districts that would not allow food trucks. So our, our new apartments is one, they want a food truck to come feed their guys at lunch and then leave, but it's multifamily zoning, so that, that was what that provision was for.
But on something like, if they would ever want to have trucks over there, it would be for like, right now it's four hours. Would they have to do some site redesign and...
Possibly, we'd have to look at that and we can, we can look at that example and see how it fits with the rules. And then a permanent restroom facility or an agreement to use a permanent restroom facility within 150 feet of the, the site would be required on a food court.
Do, do we know, or do you know off the top of your head what the requirement is for the city of Austin for surfaces or vendor stalls?
No, but I can look that up.
My, my experience would tell me that it's not a paved surface. You could use a crushed, you know, just, I don't know what it's made up of, what, you know, something less permanent than concrete or asphalt. And my thought is that by doing concrete or asphalt, which is expensive and would limit the ability to, at a future date, to maybe change that site around or would make it very costly to, you know, rip all that up and then redo it, you know, and it's something else at a future date. That's my thought. You have something, you have a question or you?
No, it's not a question.
Every time you lean up, I feel like you've got something to say, so I just want to...
It's, I've been to some of the ones in Austin and most of them are road base or decomposed granite.
That's, that's my experience.
It's almost, I don't think I've seen one yet that's been on an actual concrete or out, because it's, it's almost like it's, it's permanent, but it's temporary, like the landlord's going, okay, I'm going to do this for two years because I'm going to put an apartment in here in two years. It's that kind of idea that I seem to see.
Like I could get rid of all this with a Bobcat in a few hours on a Saturday and be good to go versus, you know, have to hire somebody to come up and rip up all the asphalt, all the concrete. So not only that, but we add a bunch of impervious cover to this, this particular area. So one good rain and, and, you know, now we're, now we have, you know, issues with that whole lot that aren't going to drain. So my, my thought or my preference for me would be if we could come up with some alternative where you could use paved surface if you want, but you could also use something that's not impervious, that's a little bit more economical and then makes future development or redevelopment a little bit easier. That's my thought.
Just need to make sure that if there is a rain, that, that ground, that cover doesn't go washing down into the drains.
So what I usually see like in Austin is, you know, it's just, for example, say you have like two sets of stones and everything sit inside and they, you know, mash it down and make it, you know, real tight. So it's not, there's no wash down issues.
And that's one of the things that we don't, I said, we don't have solid standards for that yet. That's one of the things that we need to look at with engineering is what comprises them.
So permanent facility within 150 feet, there's no issue with leaving, having a permanent facility on site like for food?
They could provide one onsite or they could have an agreement with someone off-site.
Okay.
So if the landowner wants to go through that expensive building bathrooms on that standalone site, they could do that.
Would porta-potties fall in that permanent restroom facilities?
No.
Okay.
Oh, the other thing, the other note I have here is that on, so on this, we're opting for electricity may be provided or they can use a generator. I think for food courts, where that's the sole purpose of that spot, that we, we should pick one or the other and let everybody be the same for that particular food court, with my preference obviously being that there's provided onsite electrical that they can tap into. But, you know, like I said, if we all go to food court and everybody's running on generators, I think we, we run into a, a noise issue for the surrounding properties, plus, you know, may not be enjoyable to sit there and hang out. And I think these will be, these food courts at least will be really good, you know, as we draw people to downtown. It's fun, you can walk around, you can sit down, you can try different foods and be outside and whatnot. I'd hate to ruin that experience, which is what these provide.
And I just, these are kind of some of the examples of food courts that I found. There's one in Fort Worth and then Norwich, Connecticut, they have a big food court apparently.
It's paid, but it's not...
Yeah, so the whole site would not have to be paved, just this actual parking area, so.
Or the truck.
Yeah, so that, you'll see that a lot where the trucks move in and out a lot as you get a lot of deep ruts where the trucks park all the time. So I think that's been, that's where a lot of that comes from. Or if they sit there for a really long time, their tires are like three inches into the dirt.
I have a question. So what research has been done to, to determine how some of these earlier food trucks or food courts were established? Because it seems like all of a sudden, they just kind of started congregating to one area in Austin and all of a sudden there was a food court. And so, and if we're going to do something like that here, would someone have to come and say they would like to establish a food court? Or would that begin with one person who has a truck and says they want to start a food court? What would be the process for even establishing a food court and location?
So the food court would be dependent on the property owner. So the property owner who owns a piece of property that would fit one of these food courts would be the ones who would have to initiate that to begin the site plan process or site plan review to see if that was an appropriate, if they can fit the food trucks on and meet all of these requirements. So usually the food courts are a little bit more of an organized, you have, you have one person who has the vision for the food court and they maybe contact individual trucks. So the trucks could change out. It's, it's the site and who leases that site basically that would provide the, the services and the spots. And then the trucks would still, the trucks would still have to have their individual permit from us, but they would be able to change out as often as they wanted to change out.
And have we had enough interested parties or that you're aware of, that anyone's aware of to where we need to, this might be something that's in the foreseeable future?
Definitely. We get probably at least one request every week for food trucks. We've had some requests for, yeah, kind of setting up a mobile food court. We get a lot of interest in this and right now our answer is we don't really have a clear process on how to get to this stage for them, so.
There are people that actually want, say I have a piece of property that I, you're getting people that are saying, I have a piece of property. Okay, not just people saying, I have a truck and I want to start a food court.
We have both. We have people that have property that are interested in a food court and we have trucks that are interested in setting up in the Walmart parking lot, so.
Is there any, has it been discussed at all on public property, the city owning property and sponsoring a food court?
No, not for us to initiate a, a food court, a permanent food court or even temporary food court, no.
Let me amend that. There actually has been some discussion about possibly creating a food court in either an existing park or a potential future park as a revenue source, but it's still on the talking stage, but it's been discussed.
Our existing restaurants might not like that.
And that's one of the, the concerns you hear. And that's really where the trend has come of the mobile food vendors, especially in Austin, is, is they are a low overhead way to start a business, so.
I don't want to jump ahead. So are we getting into the rest of this in the next few slides?
No.
Oh, that's it?
I was just trying to hit the high points and then if you guys have any comments on this section.
One of the things I noticed on, in the plumbing section was that we were, were saying no connection to water sewage systems. I'd like to explore changing that for food courts.
Part of that is if they're, for food courts, yes. The part of it is we'll have to make sure we inspect each and every one to make sure they have grease traps. That's, that's where we, we've run into the most trouble with food courts.
Even if it's not sewer, but just maybe just water or something.
Water, yeah. But then we still have to, I think from my research from other cities, they like to make them be self-contained because it's less inspection, especially if these are setting up on the weekends, we're not going to have anyone around to inspect or look at the way things are connecting.
And from the state and county's point of view, if it's connected to a sewer system, it's not mobile anymore.
Okay. I was looking at the, the hours of operations, so we have vendors, no vendors outside of seven to 10 p.m. I'm thinking maybe the weekends might be flexible in certain districts for that. So we have like, you know, we try to promote a fun nightlife, come and hang out, you know. If you're like coming out, coming out and it's like 10:01 and you see them, you know, leaving for the night, it might be nice.
We can look at that, yeah.
Just on the weekends, honestly, weekdays.
And it may be more, I've seen in other cities tie it to times for the district. So if it's C2 commercial and things are open till midnight, then...
Tying into that would be the, I'd like to know what the thought process behind no alcohol sales for food trucks.
I don't know how that would work with our, with the alcohol ordinances. So we have, we have a very specific map of where alcohol sales are already allowed in town and then you have to get permits from the city, so it adds another layer of review. I'm not actually sure if they can do it without having a fixed location. Like, so maybe the sites, the food courts may be allowed, but I think that's how we would have to get a...
That was kind of my thought, not necessarily the guy, you know, setting up and, you know, the one-off at Home Depot, but, but, you know, if you have a food court...
For the food court, and we'll look at that, yeah, that makes sense.
And that may be, because so if the food court meets the ordinance as far as location within a school or something, whatever, you know, whatever that is, if it fits that, then it may make sense.
And we'll look at that, I'll look at how that fits in, so.
That'd kind of be like, like it's not like in Louisiana, you can walk down the street with alcohol. I'm saying open carry in my mind.
Open container, open container is what you're thinking of.
Well, wouldn't it kind of, wouldn't that kind of be the conflict? I don't think you're supposed to be...
You'd be on private property though. Open container doesn't, you have to be on like a public street sidewalk or something like that.
Yeah, but, but city of Bastrop has specific alcohol ordinance that has distance requirements from certain things. So we can look at that and that would be something that maybe a food court could qualify for. I'm not sure a vendor that moves around would be able to qualify for that, so.
Right. Or maybe add another layer, but if the food court's an authorized site, then if the vendor's there, they can get an extra, whatever they need either from the state or if it has to be somewhere.
And we'll look at that, we'll have to look at the state, state rules on that as well.
Last thing, last thing I had was on the inspections for the health inspector, we have two options for them if a violation's found and that's either prescribe a reasonable amount of time to correct it or, you know, prescribe type of, some type of re-inspection. Would it make sense to put, to, or put an ordinance in there that has the ability to shut it down like then and there, you know, like...
And we can, we can have that as an option, we can look at that as...
They walk up and you like drop food on the ground, pick it up and throw it in a, you know, thing or whatever, you know, that, I think putting it into ordinance that they have the authority to just shut you down, you're done for now. Because the way I read this, the only other way to, to do that would be for a permit revocation which requires the city manager or somebody they, or one of their designees and that, there's a whole process for that. So if we have a safety issue or a health concern, there doesn't appear to be a mechanism in here to shut that down and stop it, you know, for, until we can get it fixed. And so that's just a thought I had on that section.
And we're still going to meet with the county too to go over what they think of.
Yeah, actually, I would, for the, the health inspection side of it, since the county does it for us, I think our ordinance should be county. Whatever the county says, that's what we follow. And we let, since they're doing the inspection, they wrote it, we just basically point our finger there. Because if they come out and they find something they don't like, they'll shut you down on the spot. They're not shy about that.
Is that, is that still applicable inside the city if we have an ordinance that addresses that?
Yeah, they're, they're the ones, we have an agreement with them that they do all the health inspections, so.
Anyone else? Well, you wanted our input and you got it.
Yeah, you get lots of input.
Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda. The only thing left is number five. I'm, thank you. We will now adjourn the workshop and convene back in a regular session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, we're out of here. Thank you.
Done.